All right, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. First order of business, the approval of the June 11th minutes.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, I always miss it when it's bold and underlined. If we could do, yeah. Okay, let's, um, before we move to our business meeting, we'll call the public hearing on ordinance 204, Code of Ethics, to order. So you have a, just as a quick recap, this thing's been ongoing for a couple of years. We are subject to the, I say new state rules, it has been a couple of years relating to ethics and disclosures. You have an updated ordinance 204 in front of you, which we introduced last month, and will discuss and vote on tonight, in order to be in compliance that we have a policy that's in compliance with state law. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the ethics ordinance, ordinance 204? Hearing, no public comments, do a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion for a public hearing for ordinance number 204.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. Now we'll call the general business meeting to order, and the first order of business is approval of the June 11th minutes. Thank you, Steve.
I didn't have any changes.
Changes, any additions or corrections? Anybody a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
A second?
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next order is receipt of the June treasurer's report.
I make a motion to approve the June treasurer's report.
I'll second the motion.
Just a point of order, do you have any motion to receive the treasurer's report? Because it's not an audited financial statement, so we...
Oh, yeah, let's see her note on that, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Okay, right. We have a motion to receive. We have a second also, we have a second, Dale.
I'll second the motion.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip a little bit here, out of order, and I'm gonna lump in the police report with the mayor's report, since I've been handling both anyway. So you do have a copy of the most recent police report responding for 53 calls to service in the month of June, a couple of arrests, four for assault, one traffic offense, no juvenile arrests during the month of June, which is good. Happens to be in the same month that we have yet another Eagle Scout. Seems like every month I stop in, sign one or two Eagle Scout things, which is really outstanding, and a lot of them come from, you know, the troop that's right here in town, so they're really doing positive things, and if you're looking for something to write an article on, maybe be the proliferation of Eagle Scouts coming out of Manchester recently. So, I mean, it's always good to write about something positive. Something else positive, I would like to commend the police department for the, really for what they did during the month of June, and particularly the last couple of weeks. They get their fair share of criticism, you know, from time to time, as everybody knows, but during the month of June, we are, as everyone knows, down at least one position. We have another one out on medical, we had a family emergency, and then, you know, we had the incident here at York and Main Street, all during Carnival week. So the guys that were, that were left standing, so to speak, really pulled together, worked a lot of hours, no major incidents up at the carnival. We did get some assistance from the auxiliary and from Hampstead and the sheriff's department, but, you know, when kudos are in order, I think we should give it to them, and that goes for all of our guys. So they, I think they did an outstanding job, and then Steve can kinda speak to some of the other guys in town, and of course, the fire department, and there's a lot of overlap there, but hopefully the carnival was successful, and we can touch on that.
It was, it was very successful.
Couple other things we're working on, last month, me, councilman Howe, councilman Black, attended the MML convention in Ocean City. I've been a number of times over the past 14 years, I think for both of you, it was your first time.
Yes.
So there's a lot of positive things going on there, and, you know, we have some information to share, and I know that we have been sharing with, with the professional staff here in the town, so hopefully we can continue to be more involved in, in MML going forward. I think that, that group, as the council of governments kinda came for a while and then left, you know, MML's sort of picked up where that's left off, and there's definitely some things that I think we can benefit from, some coordination amongst the other towns and the county in the coming months and years. The chief's position has been re-advertised, and per Kelly, that should hit the papers on Thursday. So we have received a few more resumes in, we'll lump those in, and how long is that open for?
August 2nd.
Okay. So anyone out there that's, you know, they're listening, or reads the paper, or friends of friends, get the resumes in by August 2nd, between now and then, we'll nail down the process. One final thing, I had some conversations with Steve and Kelly this week, and we're gonna work on a, we'll figure out what we call it, but Steve and I kicked around calling it, or Kelly and I kicked around calling it, a leak detection policy. And essentially what we want to address are, you know, in any given year in town, we have some water leaks that happen at residences, and the policy right now says that if it happens on the town side of the meter, where that's, that's the town's responsibility, happens on the other side of the meter, it's the homeowner's responsibility, and then we have kinda different things, and Steve would have to, if you're interested, and some of you guys may know it more than I do, but we have these, these pit meters, which essentially are in the ground, and then some other homes, the meters come on the other side of the wall. So the pit meters, what happens from time to time is, you know, residents, they don't really know anything's wrong, and they get these leaks, and, you know, lo and behold, their water bill maybe goes from $125 or $150 a quarter to $7, $8, $9, $100, $1,000 a quarter, on top of needing to fix whatever the problem is. So we're gonna, we're gonna work to come up with a policy that, you know, can kind of more equitably address those situations, and yeah, there's gonna be times when, look, the water got out, and we need to address that, but we're also looking to, you know, not kinda stick it to people, in sort of like a, what I call, like a reverse lottery situation, when your number's up, you're gonna get this huge water bill. So if you're interested in participating in that conversation, it's gonna happen, you know, kind of administratively over the next couple of weeks, and we can touch base by email, and kinda head in the same direction. Finally, we did send some emails out, and I've had some conversations with the town staff, and so let me know your feedback over the next, for those of you on the council, the next couple of weeks to month on committee assignments, and we tried to kinda nail these down with people's time restrictions and availability, and skill set and interest. So what we'd like to start off with right now would be councilman Black will be planning and zoning, and you're already rolling on the sustainability task force. Councilman Wilder, the intergovernmental relations, you know, are MML and capital projects, and of course, the big capital project that we, we're looking at right now is the solar project. Councilman Smith would be, pick up communications from Vince, and also rental housing, to the extent that comes up, and then councilman Howe would be parking rec and nature center, if that works. Here's Chris. Oh, and Vince is gonna go over to MAMA, so the merchants association. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions on those? I know it's kind of a brain dump. Next we have, as I alluded, an Eagle Scout presentation. So Alexander Kugel would like to come up and share a little bit.
Hi, my name's, uh, my name's Alexander Kugel. I'm a Boy Scout of the Troop 320, and I just completed my Eagle Scout project. I was responsible for taking down the existing sign, existing Welcome to Manchester sign at Route 27 in Westminster Street. I worked some thirdays, the before and after. So what I did was, I took down the original sign, did the landscaping in front of it, and also added a solar LED light, because the sign before was not visible at night. And we weren't sure we were gonna get enough money for the sign, but through fundraising and a lot of the donors and businesses in Manchester, we actually got more than enough, so I presented a check for $21.66 to the town of Manchester. The project's all said and done. Currently, I'm going through the process of all the paperwork, so I'm not officially an Eagle Scout yet, but it's in the, in the mix.
Are you going to come back after you get an Eagle Scout, so we can...
Yeah.
...congratulate you? Very good.
Yeah, this looks excellent.
Alex did a great job on that, on what we initially started with and what we have now. It was a big change.
Yeah.
I saw it, I'm glad, I didn't know, it was good. I was wondering. I think the town decided that they wanted to go with the new design, the one, we run with the wooden sign, and they did an excellent job. You can tell there's a big difference between before and after.
So now that we have all these Eagle Scouts turning into an enterprise fund, too.
That's right.
To lower the tax rate, all those Eagle Scouts keep wanting to bring in checks.
If everything goes as well as expected, and I expect it will, the timeframe that you would receive your Eagle Scout?
In the next month or two.
Wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you.
The other scout that was in, that did a project for us, Doug Strong, who I believe is in your troop.
Yes.
His Eagle Scout ceremony is Saturday, July the 20th, at the nature center, so he'll receive his Eagle Scout. Good bunch of, good bunch of men over there, turned out very nice, really appreciative of that.
Yeah, we do, Kelly had mentioned, when the construction is done at the Manchester Valley well site down there, we're going to partner with the Board of Education, and we've been trying to wait for that project to finish, and then relocate that sign to a more visible spot, regardless of what it is. Once construction's done, we're gonna get with the board and relocate that, that sign. So that's gonna have a very nice town. And we would like to get one on the north side, coming into town, somewhere around Halle Hills, we could, so.
Very good. Great job.
Nice job.
Thank you.
That brings us down to the town administrative report.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. We'll start with the June 2013 administrative report. Item number one, there is a correction to that, I did hear back from Environmental Alliance today, and I will be supplying them with some dates where they can come in and update the mayor and council on the situation with the MTBE issues at Sheeps. SHA projects, there have been some test pourings taking place along State Route 27 and Westminster Street, and that's in regards to the Route 27 widening project. There has been no change in regards to the State Route 30 and 27 intersection. The solar project, I did receive some comments back on this, I do need some council direction on this, and as Mayor Warner mentioned, I believe councilperson Wilder is going to head up that as part of, as a capital item there, so we'll have some discussion on that. Also, I need some council direction on the property at 3337 Victory Street. As you know, I did have the property appraised, I also had an inspection done on it, I passed all that information on to you through an email. I know Dr. Middleton has been back in touch with me, and wanted to know what our status was in that, so I do need some direction on that. Our energy grant, that is moving forward. The youth representative, I did supply you with a resume from Ms. Natalie Singer, I'd like everyone's comments on that. I think that young lady would, would be very, very good in that position as youth representative. I also passed on that she is qualified for the position. She has very good connections with Manchester Valley High School, that we can use some of their resources down there, so I think that would be a huge addition to this group right here. The Sustainable Communities Work Group, we've been meeting tomorrow, July the 10th, at 2:00 PM here, if any of you can make it, please feel free to come. Under new construction and code enforcement, both those items, everything continues on that. Under miscellaneous items, our WRCC meeting was canceled due to MML, and we put the 2004 Dodge Intrepid back out on bid, the minimum bid was lowered, and again, we received no bids on that. Moving right along to the report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for June, there's nothing out of the ordinary there. You can see one thing, that our average gallons of water pumped per day has come down from last month being 343,000 and to 312,000, and we're pretty sure that was outside water usage that was going on, people were filling pools, things of that nature, so I was glad to see that number come down. When I spoke about the Manchester Valley High School pump station, that's about 90% complete, there are some items that have to be taken care of. I know the system was charged yesterday without any problem, we had, there has to be some paving done down there, so that's getting pretty close to being brought online. The emergency response plan that we've been working on, we're about 95% complete on that, and that's for our water system. As Mayor Warner mentioned, we're also in the process of updating the water leak sewer abatement administrative policy, so if anyone has any comments about that. I won't get into it tonight, but, excuse me, but there are some things that, you know, that we can talk about in reference to meter pits and meter locations and things like that, and I think it will make a lot more sense once I, I sit down and explain that to you. One thing that is not on my report, the Holland Drive Well House re-piping project started yesterday, we had some issues down there on our side, it had nothing to do with the general contractor. We're gonna be back down there tomorrow again, and straightening the problem out, so that didn't start off too good there, so. The wastewater, the grid removal replacement equipment, that's been ordered, under NPDS and stormwater. I did attend a meeting on July 3rd, that was basically set up by Commissioners Howard and Shoemaker, and this was in regards to the stormwater fee. I had four mayors there and five town administrators, and both commissioners basically said that we do not feel we want to institute a stormwater fee, because we have monies in our budget accounting that would handle the expense of the upgrades that have to take place. The towns were concerned, because in the paper, it didn't really mention anything, could the towns link on? Because all along, we were, you know, we were told yes, the towns would be protected, the county would take in the money, the monies would be divvied out, the county staff would help us. So it was a good workable relationship. Those two commissioners did, you know, did tell us, yes, that is still in place, we will still support the towns, there is no problem there. That's fine, but that's only two commissioners, we have three other commissioners on there. So hopefully, it will carry on. Passed on an email, email to Mayor Warner the other day, and Commissioner Frazier wants to have a roundtable discussion with all the mayors. So possibly, Ms., you know, Commissioner Frazier will allude into this, you know, a little bit deeper, so. It's, it's pretty serious, because our cost, our cost, just for our projects, just to get to the 20% needed to meet the, meet the goal, would be $1.2 million. These are just our projects. Across the board with the other municipalities, you know, I can give you an example of, you know, Westminster, we're looking at, you know, almost $4.5 million. So, I mean, that money has to come from somewhere, and hopefully, it will work itself out through the general fund of the county. So that's, it was a pretty expensive project.
Steve, are the other three commissioners silent on the matter, or are they in opposition of Commissioners Howard and Shoemaker?
Really didn't give us any, any direction.
So they're now silent.
Really, yeah, really didn't give us any direction, you know, so.
I think that meeting, there were some things going around today, that meeting, that is now, I think we were pushing for the 30th?
Uh, that is correct, yes. It was the 23rd or the 30th, yes.
It looks like now, I don't, I don't know that it's set in stone yet, I saw some emails today. Of course, we were the only ones, I think, that had replied, and then everybody else jumped on, said that they preferred the 17th.
Hmm.
So I won't be able to make the one on the 17th, so if it hap-
Well, the 23rd, yeah, it was the 23rd or the 30th.
Uh, we'll coordinate tomorrow. If it's the 17th, I won't be able to make it, but...
Right. Okay.
But maybe we can get somebody there, if that's when it happens.
I, I think we really should, you know, I think, if you can't make it, one of the councilpersons, it'd be nice to be there.
Yeah.
For input. Okay, enough said about that. Maintenance erosion parks, the trimming of the trees on Main Street will take place over the next month, and we did receive our application from Department of Natural Resources for the community parks and playground grant. A meeting with staff tomorrow, a couple, couple ideas that we had possibly for, for our park system. You're familiar with Haley's Witch Playground over in Westminster. Haley's parents, they live right outside of town, they contacted me, and they have some monies in a fund set aside, that they would like to do a project in Christmas Tree Park, and I, I think that might be maybe one of the projects on the top of our list to check into POS funds, to assist that group, so we can have a nice accessible playground up at Christmas Tree Park. I think that'll work out well.
You guys all familiar with that stuff? And her grandparents own, or business owners here in town?
Yeah, that is correct. Haley's grandparents are Mr. and Mrs. Hess, Hess Music, so. Okay, that should be it for my report. Any questions?
As far as youth representatives, if I can say, I looked at her credentials, and they're quite impressive, so.
They are.
Got my full support on that, that's, she was amazing.
If, if the mayor and council has no problem with that, would you like me to contact, contact her and see if she would like to serve as our youth rep?
Sure. My support.
Natalie is a junior, well, she will be a junior, and actually, I do have a young man who is actually starting in ninth grade, and he's very interested in it when he gets to be a junior, so, you know, we may have people lined up, so. Okay, I'll do that, I'll contact her. Very good.
Steve, I'd like to know, what is your concern on the Middleton property? Like what is, what?
I would like to, I would like to get back to Dr. Middleton with the price, I think I passed my, my price on to you folks, due to the repairs needed and based on the appraisal. If you would like to, I would, I could send him a letter, you know, offering that, or if, you know, if you wanna hold off on it, so. There's a couple different avenues we can take with that building. You know, we, we had some ideas floating around, possibly the police department would move in there, possibly the historical center could move in there, possibly administrative offices could go up there. One good thing it has going for it, it's ADA compatible, so there's a lot, probably the biggest item it has going for it is it, is it joins our property at Christmas Tree Park, so it would, it would expand, expand that area up there.
I just wanted to point out there that I, I believe it's a, it's a really wonderful, probably a very small point in time opportunity for us to be able to grab this property to join other town property, to facilitate operational growth and active organization, you know, the different departments that are, I just think that she's really seriously considering moving, moving to the proposal, if it's appraised...
Value.
Value. Based on other renovation, and I think she, you're tied on that issue.
That's correct. Based on the inspection, the house, home inspection that was done. Right.
I agree, and I seen a reason why we shouldn't move forward now.
Yeah, I think it's always one of these, you know, right opportunity, right price kinda things.
Exactly.
If the price isn't right, and you can't really make it right, but...
If you can submit a letter of interest then?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, before I make any moves, I'll go ahead and, and put together a letter of interest with the, with the price, and then get some feedback from him, if he accepts it, and I'll bring it back to you folks for an official vote. Very good.
Okay. Anything else for Steve? All right, so we are now down to what Tammy's been excited about for two years. So this is ordinance 204, the ethics ordinance, which we had a public hearing for 30 minutes ago. It's introduced last month, so I'm not gonna read it all again, but essentially puts us to where we have a policy that's in compliance with state law requiring ethics and disclosures.
You gonna read all 38 pages? That'd be awesome.
It would be. I'll see you tomorrow. Yeah. So I guess, there's nothing more to do, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 204?
I guess I'll make the motion to accept, to accept ordinance 204.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion, anybody like to state their conscientious objections? For the record, hearing, no other discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations. All right. We now have two ordinances to introduce, so just introducing these this month for adoption or modification next month. Ordinance 213 relating to system-wide water capacity. Kelly, do you wanna give us, or Michelle, or somebody wanna give, I think these are both planning and zoning related, aren't they?
I'll do the, I'll do the water, the changes to the water ordinance. This all relates to our water study, and our moratorium that actually goes off in August. We made a staff decision that instead of someone else, a developer, going out drilling the wells, possibly at the wrong location, you know, putting in a pump house, that, you know, there could be some issues there, and because we were challenged in court, this was a section of our water study, this was a section that came out of our water study, and we wanted to remove all that out of the code, where we take the responsibility on, and we make sure that everything is done correctly, and we know where, you know, different areas we can drill wells and where we can't. And of course, that was broken down into different areas throughout the town, different watersheds, and we came up with the increase of a water replacement fee from $5,000 to $14,500 per EDU, per housing unit. And that would come back to the town, that would be put into the replacement to, for us to go out and, and do all the work that has to be taken care of across the board. This includes one house, or includes a thousand houses. This is fair across the board, we have factual information to back it, we have good scientific information to back it up. So this is, this is proven information, and this is the change that, that we've come up with, with our staff, and with our consultant, and with our attorney.
So Steve, further, I think it may be fair to put, or to say a couple of things, and you can correct me if I'm, and I'll state these correctly, is that, I think it's important to note that this is not a tax increase or a... Is that, I think it's important to note that this is not a tax increase or a fee increase, but rather, it's a reorganization of assessing fees to accurately reflect the real cost of getting the water per unit that is more fair to developments of a smaller size as opposed to just, to a larger development.
Across the board. That is correct. Across the board. You got, like I said, from one house to a thousand.
So whereas this sounds like this is, you know, a massive fee increase on a smaller developer, it actually is for a developer that's doing something in the five to 10-house area, this is actually lower fees than them going out, us forcing them kind of through this gauntlet of needing to go out and research, and search for wells at 50,000 gallons per day.
Correct. That is correct. You can look over that. You can see the changes that are being made. Basically, on page one, with the exception of the title replaced, that whole section gets replaced, and then it starts back on page three where you have subsection 241.10. Those are the new items through there. Also, we used the 250 gallons per day for EDU, and that was based on M D E's numbers. We use those numbers. I have to say, the group did a fine job on this. And this is just a small portion of our water, wastewater study, or water study that's taking place. But we have to get this finished because of the moratorium that runs out in August.
Steve, obviously, anything can be challenged in court. Our attorney was very comfortable, this was sound and not likely to be challenged?
Yes, we worked hand in hand with not only our consultant staff, our attorney, across the board.
Okay, so you have a little bit of time to chew on that. But again, that will become a very, an item that we're going to need to action on in August. Ordinance 214, which is some changes to the zoning code. Anybody want to give it up?
Ordinance 214 involves rewriting the entire Chapter 250 zoning code. And this was done during the moratorium and for the purpose of reducing any high water usage, permitted usages. So you'll see that most of the, most of the things that we've changed or omitted are very extreme high uses that we wouldn't authorize or wouldn't want permitted anymore, such as laundromats and nursing homes, things of that nature that we can't accommodate based on our water study also. We also did some cleanup in there with the accessories, again, that section. You'll notice that's 25026. Got a little rewrite to it just based on issues we had that we didn't have covered. And it's been about 10 months that Planning and Zoning has worked on this together. So you did get a recommendation from them as far as their suggestion that you approve this section.
So the, kind of two separate issues. On the water side, that would be both from a water usage standpoint as well as sewer capacity standpoint.
Yes, absolutely.
So if, you know, a business were to come in, we just don't have the capacity to put five laundromats in, for example.
Exactly.
And on the accessory use side, there's things in here such as, you know, if you have like a corner lot, you know, just growing hedge rows, like tall hedge rows right up to the corner, which are going to cut down sight lines and those sort of things, in front of utilities. It's those sort of things that we kind of need a constant housekeeping on to keep up with. And then you have the recommendation from Planning and Zoning in your packet. So again, that is a introduction this month. We can consider, ask questions, reach out to people on Planning and Zoning, and action on that next month. Anybody for the community? Sign in? Or wish to make a statement now? Okay, then we have committee reports, and I know we're just getting around to assigning committees today. So if anybody hasn't even gone down the list, and anybody has anything they'd like to report on?
Other than that, I'll probably have a discussion with you, or Steve, Kelly, somebody, just so I can understand, or maybe well-defined what we're looking for in my role with this. So I'll be in touch with some of you.
And you can help create it, too.
Yeah, that's the best part.
Well, there'll be some things, and I know you're kind of stepping into halfway through. Were you able to attend the presentation on the solar?
Yes.
Okay.
There's more than one, this is the last month.
The last one, yeah. And that's going to give you a lot of the, so from now, it's going to be kind of working with the town staff and kind of considering the proposals out there, and, you know, how do we move forward?
I'm going to reach out for opinions, because I think we've heard enough that we should have at least some opinion at this stage, I would think.
And then if anybody, you know, the committee assignments, if anybody has an idea of something else they'd like to work on, you know, by all means, we can add things to this, we can make changes along the way. But this just gives us some ability to kind of each focus on an area. Okay, anything else for this group?
I just, for information purposes, especially for the new council also. But we do have two projects that are becoming up in Planning and Zoning, two new. We have a Magister Farm, Section 7. That's going to start going through the review process, and that involves a piece of property over off of Sharmel and Susan Ann. We used to refer to as the Reedy. I can't remember. And they're proposing approximately 16 houses back there. They are aware of our new ordinance and the water, even though they had supplied water for Section 4 and 5 and 6, it does not incorporate these homes, and they will be paying the water supply fee if they come around. We'll also be reviewing for Stickers Overlook, which is a 12 to 16-unit age restricted apartment type building that will be off of Maiden Lane and Wood Drive, back in the corner of that. I was contacted by Rich DiMario today, so he wants to start that process, too. They've been through the county with most of their review, just need a stormwater management update because that expired. So we're going to be probably busy with them in the next couple of months.
Do we have, do we have a concept on that, one on Susan Ann, yet?
No, no, we did not. He's, he met with us, we had our pre-submitment meeting with the county last month, and so I expect that we'll be getting something. I'm getting called every day from Morrison and Ritchie, so I'm sure they're working on it.
That looks like a challenging site. Just been looking at it.
They're all pretty quick to the west of the side.
Yeah. There's going to be some tough driveways or something in there.
They want to try to also use the stormwater from Section 4 and hook into that, which...
How big are those lots, 16 back there?
They are, also does the cluster, so they're a minimal, or ten.
Okay.
I have one last question for you. A question about stormwater. When is that 20 million estimated projection to end? Is that according?
The one in the draft from the county, that we are slated to be put in, the engineering would take place in this budget year and construction in fiscal year 15. All these projects have to be completed by the governor's order or fiscal year 17, 2017. You have to do something. I mean, we have to move on this. I do have one last thing. In your, in your, in your ordinance 213 refers to Table 1. Is Table 1 attached to that? Oh, it wasn't, okay. We have, I have, I have to get that to you before you leave, and then you'll see how we, how the numbers came out.
Okay.
I have to do. Yeah, it's from our water study, which is, has to be attached to this, so. Okay, we'll do that before you leave. I have it right on my desk, so.
Okay. Anything else? There you go, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.